County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting, November 30th, 2023. Mr. Milburn, would you start us off in the pledge, please?
Let me introduce to you all the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
Thank you. Record roll, please.
Wolfson, Censor, here. Ostergrun, Russo.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Public comment.
Agenda approval.
Approve of the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have approval on the second discussion. Record roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Wolfson. Milburn.
Yes.
Now, it's a public comment. Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, new business, a public safety village. Discussion.
I have some, I have some comments.
Sure.
Can you put it forth first and then talk about it, or?
Well, we can.
Okay. Here's what we're talking about. First of all, I like the idea that we're breaking out the, one of the most important functions we pay for is a government, and that's public safety and emergency services, and making it stand on its own. What we should do, we should do it with other areas of our government as well, and maybe we can get into that in future discussions. What we're proposing is removing several emergency services departments that are being paid for out of our general fund, and then have emergency services stand on their own, be paid for out of their own village of two mills that we're currently proposing to be put on for the voters, if the voters agree to that. I also believe that we aren't reducing the general fund village that is currently 3.5195 by any amount. And so we're going from a 3.5195 mill to a 5.5195, an increase of 56.83 in taxes to the taxpayer in that portion, the county, just the county portion. And that equates to an increase of about $200 for every $1,000 in taxable value to the taxpayer, or about an increase of about 10% on everybody's tax bill. If we're going to remove emergency services from being paid for by our general tax fund, we need to reduce the millage in our general tax fund by some amount. To start out at even, it would be, we'd have to reduce it by two mill. Of course, we're not going to be able to do that, but what we're looking for is more money here for our operating expenses. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but do we currently know the percentage, Jody, or Mr. Chair, can I ask you, do we currently know the percentage of the 3.5195 that is being taken care of by all of the services that we are proposing to put in a separate fund?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I should have called you earlier, but I know you're pretty good with numbers, though. You'll come up with it.
I just got to make it so she, A, don't worry. About 34%.
So essentially, what we're doing here is we're pulling out 35%, which is 1.23, that's currently being used for all the emergency services. And that's going to convert to a 2% mill, which is fine. I can understand that. But by that means we're, by those numbers also, that means that for all of the other services, we're adding an additional 1.23 into their services. So it's kind of like a gift to them. They're not going to have to pay for anything out of that. So I just want everybody to understand what we're talking about here. So it's going to increase the amount that we spend, we're able to spend in our general fund for all the other services besides emergency. Emergency's going to go up from 1.23 up to 2, and the 1.23 is going to be a gift, basically, to the general fund.
Right.
How we put this on the ballot and how it's explained to the people is going to be, I think, pretty difficult. If we put it on the way it's currently proposed, I think we're going to get a lot of resistance. I think it's going to fail unless we do it properly and put a little bit more time and effort into figuring out a little bit better way to make this more tenable to the public. We've lost a lot of credibility and trust over the years, this board, and I think this proposal isn't going to help. We need to stop shuffling money around and from one area to the other and have money magically appear and things like that. And because it looks like a shell game. I know I'm not going to be popular with some of the other board members, some of the, some of the folks out there and their county employees. But I, but I answer to my constituents.
Thank you.
And I think we need to take a little bit more time to figure this out, make it so we can actually get an increased pass. It's going to make it easier for, for the public to understand what we're really trying to do, rather than just ask them for more money all the time. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
What do you suggest?
I think we need to sit down and talk about it more. We haven't, Darlene has done a tremendous job. Take no, nothing back. She's, she's been, I know how hard she's been working on this with Jody. I think we need to come up with this more different language, perhaps. I don't know. That's, that's the problem. We haven't, we haven't sat down and gone over it as a board. We're here to discuss what else we could suggest. I think that if we're going to take 1.23 mills out of the general fund and put it over into the emergency management services, that we need to reduce the general village.
Mr. Chair.
That's one, that's one.
And you have some valid comments.
Yep.
It is a concern of mine. I don't want the appearance, the fact that we're taking money from one to another. I don't want that appearance. The thing is, I have to ask myself, can I articulate to the constituents, to the county, to this board, and to myself, is valid? So I appreciate your comments. I'm looking for suggestion of how we can move forward that would be the right vein.
I, I think pulling emergency services out is a tremendous idea. As a government, our number one job is to protect our, our citizens, and that has to do with police and emergency services. The other things in, that are part of the budget are also important because they're, they're backup. But if we're, if we're going to take a big chunk, that 1.23% or 1.23 mills out of general, the general fund, and increase that 1.23% up to 2 for emergency services, I think that makes a lot of sense.
How much reduction are you looking for the general fund? That's what I'm looking for.
I think we need to, I think we need to phase into it over the years, maybe a year or two, perhaps percent this year, or half of that 1.23 and another half of the 1.23 the following years. I know $200 a year doesn't sound like a lot, and a $100,000 taxable, and this is taxable value, not assessed, so everybody understands that. I, I was a licensed full-time assessor up until the end of this year. I didn't renew my license. I understand assessments, but I don't understand exactly how all the, all the villages and everything else work. But, but all I know is that we're going out and we're asking the public for more money and shuffling things around to his priority. And I think emergency services is a priority. If we pull out 1.23 out of the general and move it over and increase it to 2, then the general, there's a gap there of 1.23 that we can spend on other things in the general fund, and that's why it looks gimmicky, I believe, to the public. Now, I think we, Gary's Township does this. Gary's Township has a, they pay for their, their police funding out of one, and I think a lot of our other government institutions do that. They pay for their emergency services or police on a separate village, and I think we definitely need to do that. There's no doubt. But we also have to look at what, how are we going to sell this to the public and make it so we don't end up back here next year with nothing? I'd rather have a little bit of something than 100% of nothing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, while that train of thought is one avenue, I do not subscribe to it. I look at this like when we find we have shortfalls in the budget in the future, we are not cutting public safety if we have this in place.
Very positive.
We are protecting the people of the county by having this in place when we come up with budget shortfalls.
I agree with that statement. Yes.
And, and not only that, but we have a huge piece that is so unknown to us every single year, and that's that childcare fund that we have to pay no matter what it is. So if we take one point, what you're saying, out of the general fund, and that childcare fund comes in and is going to eat part of that one up, these areas that we're talking about going over and switching over to this separate village are areas that eventually could be cut due to these mandated things that we have to pay no matter what. And this is a way to protect those, in my opinion. Now, I'm not opposed to down the road looking at maybe the village and cutting it back from the general fund, but I don't think that that's something that we can do
Right now.
right the second when there's so much unknown, and especially with this childcare fund and the way that they're redoing it, we have no idea what's coming down the pipe for that.
And, and you've done a great job. I, I hope everybody understands Darlene has been busting her tail on this. I know, we've talked about it, and, and I know there's some things coming down the road that may not happen or may happen, but I've never seen a tax increase that goes away. It just doesn't happen. Government gets the money, it doesn't go away. And so
Thank you.
us saying that, yeah, we may do it down the road, we may take some back. I, I think phasing this in over a longer period of time, for example, maybe not the whole 1.23 mill we take away from the general and shift it over, maybe it's half, maybe, maybe we start out at 1.5 with the, with the emergency services and increase it over the years. Maybe we can do something like that. I, I don't know. That's what we're here to discuss, publicly, or try to find out what's going on. And I, I think on the county budget, a 58% whack right off, even though it's not the total part of what we pay in our property taxes, 50%, 58% increase, I, I think we're going to have a hard time selling that to the public.
Well, we're going to have to give it a shot.
Mark wants to talk, Mr. Chair.
You know, every, every dollar, this board is responsible for every taxpayer dollar.
That's right.
This board has a, has the responsibility of that. We've always spent, every taxpayer dollar should be spent wisely and should be accountable. That's our job. That is our number one job. I appreciate your comment in reducing, because as, as Eric pointed out so adroitly, government always expands and never decreases. I would be in favor of strongly looking down the road at reducing the general fund village. Whatever percent that is, I would certainly be open to the reduction possibility, because we have to make sure that we don't continue to ask for more money and we can, we can actually get by on less.
Make that part of this, huh?
No, it doesn't have to be.
Today, Eric, but the bottom line is, I think it was something we should strongly look at down the road, Mr. Chair.
Yep, it's something we can look at. Thank you.
Sure. That is already in place.
Yes.
We have that authority. Every year, when we look at the villages that are going to be assessed, we have the ability to reduce them if we do not need to take in that much money.
Yep.
And I, I mean, the Hope Make Improvement Board did it this year. We reduced everybody's tax, I think it was by 20%, if I'm not mistaken, and what?
Is the Hope Make Improvement Authority a governmental institution? I don't believe it is, is it?
Special assessment.
Special assessment.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Yeah. You don't have to take.
We didn't have to levy what we've levied in the past, and we didn't because there was money set aside in that fund that we felt
Enough in the fund bill.
inadequate, asked for more than what we needed. So we didn't. And that's looked at every year.
Okay, number seven motions. Michelle, would you like to, please?
Just, I would just like to make note, there's a typo in here. The very first whereas, it says their residence, it should be TS, not CE.
Okay.
Where's that at?
The very first whereas, the county of Roscommon believes in the importance of providing full public safety services to their residents, it would be TS, not CE.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry. I don't see where you say ES instead of.
Right here.
At the end of that, toward the end of that, it should see.
Instead of houses, you want people.
Yeah, instead of houses, we want people.
I'm sorry.
You got it?
You, no.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry. I'm not seeing where you're talking about. Oh, residences with an N, okay, okay. Thank you, Jody. I just want to make sure.
That's great. All right. Move to adopt resolution number 2023-11-04, resolution submitting to a vote of the electorate, a special village for public safety services, resolution submitting to a vote of the electoral, electorate, a special village for public safety services, resolution number 2023-11-04. Whereas the county of Roscommon believes in the importance of providing full public safety services to their residents, and whereas the current revenue for allocation to public safety services continues to decrease despite an increased need for services, and whereas public safety services have historically been fully supported and requested by the residents of Roscommon County, therefore be it resolved that the following question be submitted to a vote of the electorate in the primary election to be held on February 27th, 2024. On a proposal, Roscommon County Public Safety. Shall the tax limitation on general ad valorem taxes within the county of Roscommon imposed under Article 9, Section 6 of the Michigan Constitution be increased by 2 mills, $2 per $1,000 of taxable value for 10 years, 2025 through 2034 inclusive, for the maintenance and overall operation of Roscommon County seasonal controls, sting, jail operations and programs, security, safety, security within the Roscommon County building, and medical examination and emergency management, and shall the county be authorized to levy such an increase in village for said purpose, which will raise in the first year an estimated $3,284,460.20. If approved and levied, a portion of the village money is raised in respective jurisdictions may be captured by any tax increment financing authorities pursuant to state laws.
So move. Any more discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm strongly behind this motion, but I do think we should consider strongly looking in, down the road, of possibly reducing the countywide village.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Any other discussion?
I agree with what Mark is saying, except I'm not going to vote for this.
Sure. Michelle, call roll, please.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Ostergrun?
No.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Good morning. Make sure your mics on and state your name, please.
My name is Jeffrey Max LaVoy. I live on 7408 West Emery Road. Got some questions to ask the council. Has Consumers Energy approached you at all about this Emery Road project?
We can't, you could ask us, but we can't respond to you right now.
That's, that's fine. Second question is, I'm, you know, we are having a, we are having a township meeting with the Emery Road Group and Roscommon Township at 1:00 on the 9th, and we're having the lawyer there to come and answer questions for all the people, residents on Emery Road. We, you know, the last time I was here, I was subpoenaed to have consumers come and survey my property. I just got a call the other day saying, they can't do it because of winter. They, they can't survey the property, so they're not going to come. But they, they want me to sign a paper saying that I need to, you know, we need to make arrangements for them to do it. I know by state law, they have the right to come survey the property. Well, it's, anybody, surveyors have a right. Another thing I want to bring up is, you know, I know you guys, thank you for what you did. We really appreciate the backing. We are having a Denton Township, we got residents in Denton Township because this broke up, and we're having a meeting next Wednesday at
4:00.
4:00, and we are going, they've asked us to present the same stuff we presented to you and to Roscommon Township, to represent them, because we're all one. It's all Emery Road. And we're going to ask them if they will follow suit with you guys and the township. Just general information, I have a map of Emery Road from this project. There is 120 properties on this road. That's not, not all of them home, homes are on it, but there's 120 properties. We have a petition that has over 70 names on it. I mean, that's just, that's just, that's not husband, wife. That's just the, the households. And we just don't understand why consumers is pursue, pursuing this when there is such an opposite. There's easier ways to go this route. They don't, you know, it's, there's a Waco Road, there's Riley Road. I mean, yes, there's homeowners on some of these, but not, you don't, you're not, they're not going to interrupt 120 people's property. And it's, it's, it's just, I, I know I'm trying to come here, but I just, if consumers comes, comes to you, please, please tell them, you know, take an alternate route and stop harassing these people. We've got, we got people that's been here for over 70 years that's owned property on Emery Road. I've been here six years. And like I said, I have got just the envelope stamp of a property on this road. Six years is all I've been there. One third of that property I will not be able to use. I cannot build. I can't do anything. And then they're going to mow trees down. It is just ridiculous for anybody from consumers to take and think they could just, should be able to come in just because they're a big corporation and they got money, and they got money from the state now. They got a million and a half thing from the state. They can, they can put it other places. And, you know, as for last time they were here, they said they were going to put the high power over. We're not against this. We want them to put, we want them to upgrade the system. They want to upgrade their 1940 system. Well, we're talking about bury it. If they bury it, they won't have no problems. They don't have to put new poles in. They don't have to worry about anything. Bury what they got that's been there for years. Then they don't have any problems. They don't have to intrude on people's lands because most of the poles are behind them. They already got the accesses there. So bury the low voltage, send the high voltage on a more, less populated, and there's actually, if they can go through state land, there's nobody there. So that's, I'm just here, I just want to make sure the board knows that we do not want this to happen, and we appreciate all what you have done for us. You, it's tremendous. And we're going to get, try to get Denton Township involved. And if you have any influence with Denton Township, talk to them and tell them what you think, what you've done. And thank you very much.
I have just one question. You said you had a meeting Wednesday at 4:00 PM. Where's that going to be held at?
That is for Denton Township, and we're going to ask Denton Township to do exactly what.
Sure. I just needed to know where the meeting place was.
The reason I didn't do that is because there's, you know, Denton Township, there's not as many people, and I live in Roscommon, and I had to be invited, and that's what they're going to do.
Thank you.
All of us to go, well, thank you all.
Is there any other public comment? Is there, first, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, so Michelle Stevenson, county clerk. All of the rules. Anyway, so I appreciated the conversation that took place today regarding this village. And I, what I would suggest is that, okay, you've, you've done the first step. You have this question, you have it approved, so it's going to be filed with my office to be placed on the ballot before 4:00 on Tuesday. Yes. And, but what I would recommend is that the work continue. So if you can dedicate a little bit of time at each of the regular meetings to, obviously there's work that has to be done outs, on the outside of that to prepare for the meeting, but to continue to have it as unfinished business on your regular meetings so that we can get the numbers that Commissioner Ostergrun is looking for and have a plan and start formulating that plan. Because I think if you're doing that regularly, consistently at your regular meetings from now until the election, that, that's going to help have that public comment, you can't comment. So, but, so that, that's just, that was a thought that came to me while I was listening to all of this and taking into consideration what everybody is saying, is that I think that it would be very helpful for you to continue to discuss this during unfinished business at your regular meetings and not take a ton of time, but continue to work on it throughout and, and have that. And if it's consistently spoken about, then people are going to know that you're trying.
Thank you, Michelle. Jody.
So Jody Valentino, Administrator Controller, Gears Township President. That being said, you actually do have time to work on that general fund. This village does not start until 2025. So the collection of this village would not be applicable until the 2025 budget. They, you've already approved the L4029 and set into motion that, that cannot be undone. You have not done that for 2025 yet. So my suggestion is we start a little earlier with the budget process next year, mid-July, and you can then take that time to look and say, okay, we know these are the public safety budgets that are going to come out. Everyone else submits their budgets as normal, but that gives you the opportunity to determine what the correct village rate for the general operating is then, for both, so that you can vote that and make that decrease as appropriate and address those concerns that Commissioner Ostergrun has.
Thank you.
No public comment?
Well, you can.
We're not public.
No. A discussion, yes.
Well, Sullivan, Roscommon, Denton Township, I should say, excuse me. I think one of the things that we need to focus on is the needs of this county in terms of emergency services. But also on the flip side, if we have more police officers, we have more law enforcement, we're going to have more court cases, we're going to have more childcare situations. I, I think it's disingenuous for anyone up here to say, everyone wants their taxes to go down. I do. But as the state keeps mandating without funding, it's absolutely ridiculous for anyone up here to say, I want the taxes to go down. We can't get the taxes to go down and provide the services that the state is mandating we're doing. So if you all can't get in front of our congressmen or our representatives at the state level to say, look, you keep sending, taking all this money from us, sending it downstate, what about us? We have the same needs. I think one of the things that really shocked me when I moved up here, as dumb as it sounds, we bought a police scanner. Just wanted to find out what was going on up here. Oh, my God, is crap going on up here. The amount of emergency runs for the EMS, and as I'm been listening to this, it seems like more and more of it is just. And as I'm been listening to this, it seems like more and more of it is just medical transportation, but that's the only way some people can get where they need to go. The law enforcement end of it, um, the mental health situation that we keep hearing about. That we still don't have a solution on, we still know we're going to attack it. Those aren't cheap. Those aren't free. We last year tried to get in front of all the townships and have a discussion to try to get the Headley raised. Participation on the resident side was pour it the best. So we got to get out there and say, look, this is being mandated on us. We have to pay for it. Here's our plan to pay for it. It's not going away, people, unless something changes in Lansing. And you all need to get that message out. We can't do it. And we do it in our churches, we do it in our social clubs, et cetera, but it's the message is thus not getting out there. All I got to say.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chair, I am allowed to speak as a private citizen.
You're not a private citizen, Mr. Chair.
When you're, you're a private.
You're not. You're a commissioner right now.
Do this before.
I know. Any other public comment? Yes.
Ben Low, Under Sheriff. I guess just briefly, I was involved in a lot of the meetings that we did for the Headley last time. And I don't know that any of us sitting in this room can say whether this is going to pass or whether it's not going to pass. That's ultimately up to the people. What I heard at those meetings and several of you were involved in those meetings too, was we don't want a Headley. We don't want a Headley renewal. Don't want that rolled back. Don't touch the Headley. We will give you more money, but tell us what you're going to use it for. It's clear over the past many, many years that there is not enough money to continue running the county the way it is. And everybody has discussed what those reasons are. A lot of them go back to the state of Michigan. If you, as commissioners, represent taxpayers. And what they have told us in the public meetings we had is we don't want a Headley. Tell us what you're going to use the money for. Give us an option. Then all we can do is put it back out to them and say, is this what you want?
Yeah, because we're spelling it out now.
I, I don't know whether it will pass or not, but that's, that certainly was the overall theme that I got from those meetings from people that came and talked with those meetings. So ultimately, none of us can impose taxes on people unless they vote them in. If this is what they want, they will vote for it. If it's not what they want, they won't vote for it. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With that being said, number nine in German.
Who move this chair?
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.